Just, you know.
We could all stand for. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Good evening, everyone. We should have a motion to open the meeting.
I second.
Thank you. And if we could have a motion to approve the minutes from the January seventeenth meeting.
So moved. Aye.
And now, um, if we could have a motion to extend. One year extension for twenty-five liberty from May seventeenth. It'll be, it'll go to, what would that be?
It'll go to May twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four, right. We can have a motion for that?
So moved. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now fifty-five Howard, I believe we are adjourned fifty-five Howard. So if I could have a motion to adjourn fifty-five Howard Street.
I second.
And that would be adjourned to April twelfth, I believe. Great, thank you. Next, um, if I could have a motion to withdraw twenty-six, twenty-six Walker Avenue. Um, they have asked us to withdraw their applications.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if we could have a motion to adjourn forty-five Hillside Drive West until April twelfth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's now we move on to new business. And the first item tonight will be one sixty-eight Madison Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. This was the one that didn't have the sign.
Oh.
Yeah, I sent the wrong address on the thing.
And I looked at this one before, so I hadn't even gone. Okay, so that's good one to catch.
What's the address?
We were on last. And I, I know she, I know he went out and posted the sign, I guess.
And may I ask?
Hi, everyone.
Aye.
Good evening. So, did the sign fall down on this one?
I don't, it's not there today.
Yeah, so then that could be remedied by allowing the applicant to proceed today, but re-noticing it for just keeping the hearing open until the next meeting and re-noticing it for the next meeting. That cures any defect to notice. But the applicant can proceed.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask the applicant to please state their name, please? I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It's up.
It's up.
Denise Shern, S D H O E N, a current applicant. Uh, Melanie Croissanti, who resides at one sixty-eight Madison Street. Uh, before I begin tonight, I would like to hand up to the board some visual aids that I would be walking through as I present my package here. And you'll also see that we submitted to a memorandum of law prior to the previous meeting, um, where I wrote out the arguments, um, for your five factors.
Thank you. There are any pictures?
That I can, um, get forward to.
We do appreciate the pictures.
So we're pretty important tonight because applicants would like to, um, apply a punch to the bill. The pool will be eleven by twelve with, um, an incorporated spa with eight by eight. The pools were other three pools and the spa.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing. I'm sorry. I just hear papers rattling.
Yeah, the paper is.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm yelping as loud as I can.
Okay, I'm sorry.
In order to. She is seeking a total lot coverage variance. Um, at the moment, the property is over slightly over coverage, um, in its existing state. Um, as proposed, will be going over on coverage to twenty-eight point seven percent. So she seems to have, um. I'm sorry, three point seven. Yes, three point seven percent. Uh, the, um. The request for the pool is simply for her to have more use of her rear yard area. Um, you'll see in the packet that I handed out that there's a picture of an aerial. I'm sorry, it's not the best imagery. But you will see that there are pools in the, almost the entire neighborhood, um, much larger than what we see here today. You'll also see in your packet that we did approach the neighbors and obtained letters of support from four of the immediate neighbors. Alexander. Nixon, uh, uh, forty Suffolk Street, he immediately addressed to Miss Croissanti. Jane Harris is at one seventy-four Madison. She's right next door to Miss Croissanti. One seventy-five Madison, Adrian Harris lives across the street from Miss Croissanti. And Dale Rubin at one sixty-nine Madison, also across the street from Miss Croissanti. All submitted letters were for.
Do you have any negatives?
We did not receive any negative. I don't.
Okay, thank you.
The lot, as it's currently configured today, is point two, uh, point two of an acre. So it's very undersized for the district that it's in. Where the minimum size today would be twenty thousand square feet. It is improved with a single jetty residence and accessory structure in the rear. There is a bin that was added to the back of the accessory structure that encircles on the side yard stepback. It was noted for variance by the building inspector, but we're proposing to remove it. So we will not need a variance for that bin. That will also reduce our lot coverage, um, which makes our variance plus for lot coverage less than it would be if we kept that in place. Uh, it was just used for garbage disposal. It was a receptacle for garbage.
So that, that building is pre-existing, correct? So now it'll be five point seven because you're removing that bin.
That's right.
Um, and then the pool equipment will go inside?
The pool equipment goes inside that, um, structures to reduce noise or for neighbors and for the applicants as well.
So just, um, so you know, the pool equipment though, inside the building does have to be fifteen feet from the property line. So there is a corner where it does fit.
Okay.
It's the northeast corner.
Right.
Thank you. So when it's inside the building, we still want it to meet the fifteen foot stepback?
Yeah, I just went through this on another project with Chris and that's what his interpretation was. And even if it's in the building, it has to be fifteen feet.
So we'll make sure that we place that in and place this little. With respect to the analysis that the board needs to do tonight, as you know, we're looking at the benefits to the applicant in having a swimming pool versus the detriment to the community in granting her variance to allow her to grow slightly over on, um, her coverage limitation of twenty-five percent. Uh, the, I've attached to the memo of law, several decisions that you've made in the past where the board has concluded that, uh, for lot coverage, keeping lot coverage, um, under thirty percent is desirable. So when she first came to me and asked me about this project, that was my first directive to her was to make sure that we keep it under thirty percent. And we have accomplished that result by keeping the pool at the size that you see before you. The other thing that was important was making sure that the neighbors are fully and adequately screened. As it exists today in the pictures that I submitted, you'll see that the rear yard is quite full with construction. But in addition to that, I've included in that package a landscaping plan secured by an founder of design architecture. And, um, that actually is, um, totally, um, the school, um, sort of, um, not to be real, it's invisible, but, uh, to pass or vibe on the street. But the landscaping will also aesthetically enhance the property.
Um, so can I ask, I know you, you went, you gave us some, several letters of the neighbors. So the neighbor that's just to the right of where, um, the pool equipment will be in that building, were they one of the ones that approved?
That was the only person we could not get in touch with. So we knocked on the door, sent letters, no response.
But because it's in the building.
It helps. And since you're gonna have the shade.
It's still gonna.
Well, yeah, you're, yeah, if you're making it legal, then it's, exactly.
It's not, it wouldn't be.
The, um. We don't believe that the requested variance here is substantial. And we do believe it is the minimum necessary to afford or leave. The way the property is, um, improved at the moment, it's already above the twenty-five percent limit on, uh, total coverage. So anything we add to the property automatically pushes us further over that limitation. Uh, which is why I encouraged her to remove anything that we could, realizing that I was limited in what I could ask her to remove, considering she just has the house and the accessory structure and not much else to take out. Uh, so the bin was a good opportunity for us to get back to the board by removing that. Um, otherwise, we tried to keep it, um, to the minimum requests that we needed in order to put the pool in her rear yard.
So, I mean, sounds a good idea of moving, removing the bin and then you decrease the, um, variance in, given the small size of the lot. It seems, um. Understandable that, you know, you have a unique setup.
We definitely are constrained by the size of the lot.
The less than ten thousand.
The location, the existing improvements and, um, well, especially with the size and with, you know, it's, it's a very, very small lot. But it's a beautiful property and I think that with the pool and the landscaping that it has proposing, I honestly think it'll be enhanced by this application. I don't think it'll pose a detriment to the community. I don't think anybody will be offended by its existence. And it won't create a new precedent in the neighborhood. Because as I said, the neighborhood has a lot of pools in it already, they're much larger.
Um, my only concern, I, I'm basically fine with this, you know, as long as the bin is removed and the pool equipment's in the correct place. But, um, I'm assuming that the, the new sanitary system is required because the old sanitary system is either inadequate or too close to the pool?
It was, um, uh, uh, before she even asked for a pool, she came to me and asked for an updated sanitary. So it, it was an environment, she wanted to.
Right.
For environmental reasons.
So do we know that there is gonna be, because we do have to maintain a twenty-foot distance separation and it looks like the sanitary system is very compact. And I'm just wondering if it really will be that compact.
Oh, I see.
Because I know that they take up, even, even those systems that are sort of ganged together do take up an amount of space. And there has to be a twenty-foot separation between the two. That's my only.
I did have it designed by a subject engineer.
Oh, okay. So does this reflect that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's a plan that he drew. I don't have his plan with.
No, but I mean, if this was, if this isn't just something to survey or put on, but it's actually the, the engineered footprint, then it works.
I, I had an engineer for her, uh, on purpose. To make sure that we had some.
Sounds great. Any him, any folks?
No, I'm fine with, uh, the proposal and, uh, I don't think it has any interference with the neighborhood. And, and she has affirmative for the building.
And you're down to twenty-eight point seven, yeah, now, so.
Exactly, exactly. I think that's part of it. We appreciate when you make those changes because it just, as you know, the less variance, the better. So if I could have a motion.
Wait, wait, wait. I would, I would just ask that the board adjourn this. She has to renotice it. And it won't delay a decision for her. I can still write a decision for the next meeting, but you would keep the hearing open, renotice it, and then it would just be open, public hearing, close, you know, hear from the public if there's any from, from the public who wants to speak and then close the hearing and then we could render a decision the same night. Okay?
Good. Yeah. So is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on one sixty-eight Madison? Anyone online? Back here? Carrie, nobody online?
Nope.
Okay, great.
And Joe, I know, were you fine with?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Okay, so. All right. We have a motion to table to, uh, April twelfth.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And should we do a straw vote now, Liz, so that you?
You don't have to. It's fine.
Okay. All right, thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
All right, the next item we have is twenty-three Suffolk Street and eight Concord Street.
Good evening, Denise Shern, for the applicant. This is K D K J is in Ann Holdings LLC, uh, the owner of the property Suffolk and Concord Street. Good evening, that's your one member of the board and council. An application, oh, I'm sorry, Denise?
Yes, please.
This is an application for a two hundred square foot payhouse to be situated between an existing pool and Concord Street. This property is also unique in the sense that it's an L shape. Um, it goes from Suffolk Street to Concord Street, so it has two frontages, two front yards. There is nothing that you can place on the Concord Street side without requesting a variance because it's located in a technical front yard. The rationale behind the request for the pool house is that the existing pool, as you can see on the survey, is set in the back of the property, quite a distance from the main house. And in order to use the restroom facilities, you need to trek back to the house and then go through the kitchen to get the bathroom. And that has created problems for the homeowner, uh, who would appreciate having facilities in close proximity to the usual. We were before you, um, not me, another attorney represented the applicant several years ago for a larger accessory structure in the same location. There were, uh, concerns by the board and concerns have a neighbor of the size of that structure. That has been withdrawn and eliminated, even off the drawing table. And the applicant started to scratch and ask for something of a minimum size that he needed in order to obtain the result that he was trying to achieve, which is to have this bathroom in proximity to the swimming pool. The other reason for placing it in that location is to provide the swimming pool with some shield from Concord Street. And to make the view of the Concord more of a sort of principal structure. So the cottage, uh, I'm sorry, the pool house has been designed in a way that, um, the, uh, from the street. There's also, um, some parking that's situated in front of that. Um, the existing parking is on Concord Street today. Because of the fact that we are situated in a technical front yard, we need, um, uh, for a total three hundred and dash one from one eighty-four. I don't think it's fundamental, but this application, um, that you can file, um, directly through the, and, um, it's underlying, this application also needs to standardize. Here are the three banks that are required for the pool house. One is just situated in front of the yard. The other is situated, um, for, um, a distance of. To situate it, to situate it closer than thirty-five feet from. Should I go?
Yep.
Uh, to situate, um, to situate closer than the required thirty-five feet foot distance that would be necessary to place an accessory structure from Concord Street. Uh, the one thing that I would point out is that as you, um, look at Concord Street, and there should be pictures annexed due to the memo of law. We'll see that, um, that Concord Street has a number of homes that are built to be right up to the street. And that seems to be the trend of development there. I think that if you came in and asked the property thirty-five feet, which is the required stepback from Concord, you might actually tell me that that would be inconsistent with the development pattern in the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the villagers, having figured that out years ago, changed the required stepback to principal structures in the historic district to twenty feet so that they were no longer pushing newer houses further from the street and making them, uh, sort of look out of place in a historic neighborhood. So, um, the requested variance to situate at twenty-one feet from Concord is in conformance with that twenty-foot stepback that would be applied if it was a municipal residence. Uh, the last variance that we needed is a coverage variance. As far as coverage is concerned, the total amount of coverage is actually broken down, but we asked for the variance anyway, um, but just to be sure. So, um, we're asking for a two point four six percent variance to allow twenty-seven point four six percent coverage. We're twenty-five percent is the maximum permitted.
Denise, can I interrupt? Do you also require, um, are you gonna merge these as a condition of approval? Because are they two separate lots still or are they merged already?
Merge, but the, they're two separate tax map numbers still, but by.
Are you gonna merge them at real property through the assessor or?
Have to submit, I guess, that RP form.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think anyone's done that yet.
Would, would you, would you be willing to make that a condition of approval if they decide to?
Absolutely.
Otherwise, you would need, I think, a variance from three hundred dash nine point one, um, A three, which was you can't have accessory structures on a lot unless the main or principal building already exists, that section.
Totally agree. Yes, they're meant on piece. And, um, I know they were merged by deed. But, um, before I left the office, my associate told me that they still have two tax map numbers. So I'll worry about that for the village.
Great, that's helpful. Um, could I ask one question?
Sure.
It looks as if the pool right now is twenty-two and a half feet from, um, what would be the north, uh, edge of the property line.
Okay.
Have they thought about moving the pool back a little bit? Like you could move it back as much as seven feet and still have the fifteen feet. That way, um, you could even move then the pool house back a little bit. You know, you could, you could pick up some feet if you moved the pool house then up, uh, the seven feet. And then that way.
The pool's there, though.
Yeah.
Oh, the pool's there.
Existing.
Ah, I didn't realize that.
Otherwise, I see what you're saying. Um, that would give us more room. Yeah.
I see you putting the pool. So basically alls we're doing is changing the existing building to.
Yeah, if you look at that, um, I know it's sort of gray and hard to see, but if you look under the red, which is proposed.
Right, I can see that, sure.
Utility shed that's there. So the proposal is to place the pool house in that location that's already been disturbed and has had a shed on it before. So it's not in a surprise location where it's just popping up.
Yeah, you're just moving it closer to the street.
Because it's slightly larger and a slightly different shape, it does come closer to Concord than the existing shed does.
Um, I was just noticing though, um, I'm sort of fine with the building because I appreciate the concept. And there's an, an accessory building that's right on the street, right next to it. So there are little accessory buildings. And then there's another one sort of next to it. Um, but I was just noticing the proposed pool equipment is not noticed.
Oh, at twelve.
And it's twelve point eight feet from the property line. And also, wouldn't that require, that's another item in a front yard, isn't it? In addition to the, um, so that would need to be noticed.
Okay.
It's behind a wall, so I don't.
I'll ask them if somehow we can put the pool equipment in the pool house, although I know, I mean, it's small, like.
Yeah, because you can only, you can only go up to two hundred square feet for a pool house with a bathroom. So that does make it hard.
Could you flip it to the other side where it's seventeen point seven?
That would give us two and a half feet to work with. I think that might be possible.
Although it looks kind of like it's in the middle, doesn't it? If you look at the corner of the pool house to the property, don't they look equal? Maybe not.
Oh, right. I see what you're saying, yeah.
Anyway, that, I just was noticing that.
Okay, so, uh, re-removing for the, if I need a side yard stepback variance for the pool.
Well, and also.
Not yet, I'd rather have it.
But it's also in the front yard and it's also not thirty-five feet. So it's all the same.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Could the pool equipment go at the other end of the, the pool?
I think we would be open to any suggestions or has about where to place the pool for them, honestly.
I mean, I don't think it matters as long as it's in a conforming location.
Right, so.
I mean, it could go there, but then you're gonna see it from, they probably don't want it. They're just gonna see it from the house. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, just an idea. You could put it in a little shed, I mean, a little. Right? So then you're not looking at the bare equipment.
But then.
So if this is twenty-two, you have a little bit of, and then you're not worrying about being in the front either.
Putting it behind the pool, uh, the pool.
Where do you have the twenty? Right.
I will ask them to do that.
That will be hard, though, because it has to be fifteen feet from the property line and ten feet from the pool. So I don't think that's gonna work to build another building. Because you're gonna need another variance some other way. And at the moment, I'm sure that the view, there's a view from in that backyard straight back to the house on whatever that other street. No, from here, looking that way. There's a house here, that's sort of.
So, this is. Can I ask you a question as you look here, the house, I mean, the pool? I'm just saying this home there has a backyard.
Yes.
And that's the backyard here.
Yes, that's correct. Well, well, this is our backyard. So here's our lot line. This is the other lot here, someone else's property.
That really.
And there's, I didn't, is, there's a gate going across?
No, no, there, no, this is.
There's nothing going.
Nothing, no, these are contour lines here. Um.
But I'm saying. In reality, the people here, shouldn't this be, have a, um, fence?
Pool fence, yes, there's, there is, there is a pool fence on the property line, these, if you see the little X's.
I see that here, but there's no, nothing here from this property.
They're right on the line, so it's very hard to see.
It goes like, it goes, the, the gate goes like, the fence goes like that, straight, crooked, and then it goes like that.
Okay.
That's right.
So you can think to see if there are any other options, otherwise clearly we'll have to renotice.
Exactly. I figure out what we want to do with the pool equipment.
See, I'm fine with the concept of the pool house there, I mean, I think it's a nice screening.
They just have to show the variance.
Right. Um, but I don't know how other, everybody, I mean, we should give them a little feedback, so.
You need to hear from the public too.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I wanna know how the rest of the board feels.
I was just trying to find ways to have less.
I don't have any objection.
I mean, if you could move the pool equipment into a better location, that would be appreciated, but I don't know if there.
I don't know if there really is.
It is one, it is one.
So that's what you're saying, here you have screening because you have the proposed wall. And you have that pool house.
Well, and there are also two bills, the other factors, there are two buildings on that property line that almost create another wall.
Set a buffer.
Yeah, so there's nobody right next to it.
No one's laying out.
It's better than on the other side where there's actually an harbor where somebody might sit.
Yeah, this side would be more usable backyard space than the neighbor than.
Neighbor friendly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's better where it is if you can't find a, a more conforming location.
So you could um, make a motion to.
You need to hear from the public, Madam Chairwoman.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about eight Concord as well as twenty three South?
Thank you.
So we'll adjourn it until April twelfth and at that point you will. Um, renotice on the pool equipment piece, if you come back with a different location, we can look at that. And then um, you can also talk to your client about merging.
Thank you very much, thank you for your presentation.
Uh, I still move.
All in favor?
Alright.
Again, thank you for the photos, they're very helpful. Okay, so now we will move on to. Twenty Lighthouse. In.
Each one.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
My name is Shannon Bradley and I'm doing the permits for uh, William Maguire and Joanne Zervos. They are homeowners at thirty Lighthouse Lane. Uh, the South County Tax Map number is, the last one for this one. Uh, it's three zero two dash six, six dash eleven.
Wait, can you, wait one second, so we just need to open the public hearing for twenty Lighthouse Lane and it's twenty, I believe.
No, yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and are you a lawyer?
I am not.
Okay, so we will need to swear you in.
Okay.
I make a motion to, okay.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
And I'm sorry, your first name is?
Shannon.
Hi Shannon.
Aye.
Um, Shannon, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, yes?
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you. Now you can.
Okay, so I'm here representing my clients um, for relief of section three hundred dash nine point four. Uh, such, uh, part D of that, and what it is, is. It's for relief to be um, as built to be to be five feet six inches in height, which is located in the front yard. As to where only four feet is permitted above the metal rating. So we're here for relief of that. All right, girl, um, now we go.
May I ask you a question, it says as built.
Yes.
When was it built?
Uh, it was built about six months ago, I have uh, the packet that you should have has all the information with the gates. East Hampton Fence built it. Prior to the construction, they did file for a certificate of appropriateness, which is what the homeowner thought they needed to do. And they were informed by the gate and fence company that supposedly their part was done and they could move forward. Um, the homeowners did follow what they, you know, what they thought they were doing with the village correctly. And were following the directions of companies that had installed it, they didn't install it themselves. Um, they were ready and they, they really thought we should have been appropriators, appropriators being filed was a go ahead for them. I, I can't actually.
So that means it went before the ARB?
Yeah, who, who gave, who gave the permit then to build the fence?
So, so it did not go in front of the ARB.
Okay.
It was stopped because it doesn't mean zoning setback.
Okay.
So, so it doesn't mean zoning, so that's when they were informed that it needed a variance and.
But that was all done after it was.
Done.
It was done after, not before, okay.
So. And I guess the question would be, the gate company, they just assumed that that height was acceptable?
Unfortunately, yes, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I did a lot of research on this and um, what I did is I filed a lot of paperwork. Uh, when I met with the homeowners, I was retained by them as a permitter, that's what I do really is just um, the paperwork and bring it to and from. And then I do my own research to try and help the homeowner or help the community in whichever context. And in this case, uh, it is as built, so we do respectfully request relief. Um, as far as filing uh, before you for the relief, you know, I do have all the reasons why the property itself, the parcel is unique. Um, why it would benefit the homeowner and not detriment of the neighborhood. I do have all those different items, um, and could describe them to you and, and what we think. As far as its uniqueness, it's located right on one fourteen at corners on twenty Lighthouse, it, it's like this, so it's, it's a corner parcel. Um, the homeowner is receiving in the past since two thousand to uh, probably twenty twenty. The increase in population and traffic, uh, there's an increase in, unfortunately, there's a very large increase in theft in all our neighborhoods. I'm from Cove, um, and Southampton and everybody, you know, it, it, the homeowner just feels a little unsafe. And that's why they wanted to put it in. Uh, they did feel that they were following what they needed to follow as far as the filing with the village. I think that that wall was dropped on behalf of the company doing the work, but. You know, we're not here to play a blame game or compare ourselves to anyone else, we just wanna represent what we have going on and ask for relief. And find out if that is possible.
So the, the gate is new, the driveway gate is new within the last six months?
Uh, yes.
But the fence in front of the house was approved prior by the ARB and that's how you got the certificate of appropriateness?
They didn't, uh, they didn't get a certificate of appropriateness. What happened is.
Does the, yeah, I don't know, does the deer fence require a permit? Because there's a, a wired deer fence on this property that's like six feet tall.
There is.
But, but that's not, that doesn't comply with, is Liz still there? That doesn't comply with the code, correct?
I'm here, no.
So what don't, that we need to also include that i- in this, correct?
Or they have to remove it, yeah.
They, they have to remove it, it's not just the gate.
Depending on what the board decides.
Right.
We have a multi, I don't know how I would describe it, but other than a multi-application in the building department. Um, with this board, uh, to, to try and include it all of that, we're not trying to.
Yeah, but before us, right at the moment is.
It wasn't noticed.
It wasn't noticed, it's only for a gate, correct?
That's what I was trying to figure out, was the fence there before and now you added the gate and the fence had been approved?
No, no, the, the deer fencing behind the arbor righty was there, uh. I, I mean, they could take it down, they didn't ask for it on my relief request, so I, I don't think it would be granted anyway, it's six feet high, your fencing, so it would just be removed. Um, I, I know, I, to date, I was just, when my home was on, it's still there, so. I mean, you don't know when it would put up, so we don't, it could, it kind of, it could be, I don't have the time or the power.
Yeah, I mean, because, but, but the four foot, in front yards, four foot high has been a rule for a long time. So anything that's six feet is not, is in violation.
Right.
Except in, on rear, rear, and rear lines inside.
That's right, the rear.
Rear, lot lines, yeah, four, yeah.
And the side to the front of the house.
They are a corner lot, so they do have, um, you know.
Two fronts to that.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, the homeowner is very compliant, they're very upset that this whole thing happened, to be honest with you, I don't, they're not believing in any way. They honestly felt they were in compliance by filing and what happened is they called several times to check. Everything kind of got missed, I don't know if it was miscommunicated. When I was brought in, everybody had some miscommunication going on between the company and the homeowner, I wouldn't necessarily say, um. Anyone other than that, but the homeowner is.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, said please do what you can, you know, go to the board and see what kind of relief you can get. I'm sure that they would take the fence and do whatever is recommended, they just want to keep everything in compliance to code. Or, and get relief because it's an actuality, that is, we are asking for relief for the gate because it is a little higher than the four feet. Um, I don't know if you consider that substantial, but it's one point six feet over, so five point six feet. In total, in totality.
I can't, I don't recall, is it an electric gate?
It is an electric gate, um, I did bring some information with me just as to the reasoning and what, you know, what makes the time unique and the parcel unique. Uh, would be just the increase in population, uh, the increase in theft out here and just wanting to feel safe. Um, I mean, I really, I printed out so many different things showing the strange robberies that are going on in the past year in our area at Sack Harbor here. Um, and it's just a feeling of safeness and four feet really doesn't matter. For this particular parcel, because it's open, if you drive down one fourteen. This, the home that's, is situated on this parcel is open when you're coming, you're traveling east. You can basically see everything, the homeowner, you know, you, you, it's very visible, it's different, it's unique. It's not two houses down where you can't see it and there are many, we didn't want to compare it to others, but there are many in the surrounding neighborhood, which I have pictures of. Where the gates are six feet high, just bluntly six feet high. I, it's not my business, I don't know what's happening with those, um.
Well, I noticed across the street, there's a gate that has an arch that's definitely not four feet high.
Right.
That's correct, so I mean, I have pictures of all that. So we're really here for a recommendation as to.
Uh, so they're willing to remove the, the, the six foot fence?
I mean, my recommendation would be, uh, they're willing to comply with your suggestions, I don't know if necessarily it has to be removed or if we would have to file, which we have already. Co, we filed together for a permit for the deer fencing, but she would have to bring it down to four feet.
Right, I mean.
And the permit's in on, the permit request is in on that, like, I put everything in order on the property that I.
So there's a request in for a six foot high deer fence or a four foot high? Oh, okay, okay.
We definitely addressed the deer fencing, um. I know in the future they would like to put a hot tub in the back, you know, in the backyard and it, it definitely meets these setbacks, there's just a few small things that they wanna do. Um, in compliance to everything, so this is my thing over, that's why I would.
I mean.
So, yes, so.
I, I, I guess I, um, the, the only advantage to this fence. Is that it's very open.
Yeah.
Right.
And it almost disappears.
Right.
Fence, yes, fence disappears.
Well, the gate.
No, the gate doesn't disappear.
The, the gate's pretty open too.
Well, given that it's slats.
Slats, and they're spaced fairly wide apart.
I do have a picture of what these already is.
May, may I see that?
I thought you already did. Give the picture of the gate of the parcel that we're requesting relief.
I mean, the gate is very light.
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't have a strong presence.
The, the problem I have with this is that we have laws and we have.
Yeah.
The variances and there, as you look, as I rode around Sack Harbor, you don't see many. Most of the fences are four feet and that you never had a permit to put it, so that's.
Yes.
That's to me is.
Visible spot.
But unfortunately, this is what's the majority and I could have probably taken three others of these. Row, on the same row as this particular client and this is hu- higher, I know for a fact, much higher.
In the middle, right.
Yes, and the times ha- I mean, I, I, I know that the times have changed as far as why that gate is necessary. And it does, you know, this board does, I grant relief for uniqueness, the parcel is unique in nature because it's a corner lot as opposed to that one fourteen. A- as compared to others.
I, I don't think it's all that unique, I don't know what everybody else thinks. I thi- I, Liz, is there?
You have to hear from the public.
Yes, but we also don't wanna set a precedent here because.
Right.
Everybody's gonna start putting up gates, whatever they want, and we just have to approve them.
You're allowed to consider the presidential nature of um, decisions. So that's definitely something you could put in your decision if you decide not to grant it.
All right, why don't we, um, is there anyone here this evening from the public that wants to talk about twenty Lighthouse? Either online or here, first.
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
If there were an arbor righty or a different way to landscape where the gate wouldn't be so visible from the road and maybe. Maybe wouldn't make it such.
Hmm.
Like singled out that they, oh, they have a gate, you know, maybe if we could just address it with some landscaping there, if you're coming down one fourteen. It'd be a nice arbor, arbor righty of some sort. If you did it in like an L chain.
Right.
Would definitely not expose it as much.
Hmm.
It's a good suggestion.
It'd be a huge compromise and I know it would be tremendously. Make a difference as far as if you can see it on one fourteen.
It is just one precedent, that's.
Was there? Is it in the historic district?
No, no, it's not.
No, so that's one of the.
One factor.
One of the factors that. Late, there's no one here.
Oh.
We tried. Um.
I don't know, what does everybody else think?
I mean.
I'm worried about the precedent picture of it.
Is there any, can you, I don't, I can't really, is there anything, Liz, that you can think of that make, we can make this. Um, unique to this property, I can't really think of anything, it's just a big square parcel.
Yeah, that's difficult.
And its location doesn't, I mean.
Well, it's a corner property and it's visible, but there are lots of corner properties that are, but I mean, it's not like, you know. I don't know.
It may have helped if you, they come first.
Yeah, I know, I'm sure the homeowner would have appreciated that greatly, trust, not putting that confidence and trust in the company.
Excuse me.
I agree.
You do have to hear from the public.
We tried, we, we.
Okay, great.
We did, yes.
I didn't notice, sorry.
Okay.
Doesn't help that the gate doesn't look as, as high because it's not.
So this is a fence.
A lot of the gates in the neighborhood are.
This is the fence. I think so, yeah, that's the fence. I think so, yeah, that's the fence. That goes across that way and this way, yeah. Well, the fence is gonna be addressed, so the fence will become four feet high or.
Right, so. So that's a step in the right direction and we appreciate that. And so you're saying, when you said that's already been submitted.
Yes.
That's been carried you.
There be, um.
Right.
Found it, so it's.
Right.
So.
And how much trouble is it to make the fence, the gate shorter?
That's a lot.
It's my, I mean, it, I, of course, we approached the gate company and it's.
Yeah.
It's some standard.
We'd have to probably buy a whole new gate, correct?
Correct.
And then.
And I did mention while you were looking at that, it, we, I don't know if it helps at all, but we did not request for six feet. It is, it is one foot, six inches, so it's still, you know, it's. So. I do wish that they came here first. They do too, but that's not, you know, that's not the case, so.
I mean, I will say in its, you know, i- it is a very open fence. It's very tasteful. And because of its horizontal nature, it doesn't look as tall as it is. So, those are factors in its favor.
So if, let's all just think about it, if, um, the deer fence comes down to four feet.
Yes.
And you do plant. Some shielding. I think the biggest question is, once we say yes to a fence of this height. Then the next one is gonna be.
Do we already have another?
Right. Now we have a precedent.
Hmm.
Now it's five, six versus six, but they're inch, you know.
Hmm.
Then it's only a couple inches difference. Um.
I mean, does this, um, all people who have four fen, four feet fences, wanna change their fence?
I don't think anybody would want to go through that monetary or time experience or permitting experience to do that, to change. I mean, if, if that's a question of like people that already have four foot with this.
Well, I mean, the same, same thing you indicated about, uh.
I personally.
People, uh, coming down the street and exposure and so forth.
Yes. I mean, I personally put a gate up recently. I'm not at, you know, I'm, I'm in Southampton. And we did it because just in, I, I have all the articles, just in the code alone, we had twenty-two robberies in the past eight months. These kids keep, they're in your yard, they wave to your ring camera. It's, it's just, it's a horrible feeling. Times have changed. Um, I'm not trying to change anything or make precedent for anything, but I do understand the, you know, the feeling to want to be secure in your own home. A- and live freely and, and feel like your stuff is protected. Um, I did bring with me all the articles between Sag Harbor. And Southampton, um, East Hampton, everything that's been going on, uh, as far as the staff. It's something that's very serious.
But the problem with that is that means that we, we say that's not, doesn't make it unique, that makes it universal. It's like permission for every, but everybody can then put up a gate. It's, it's five foot six high.
Right.
I think the only one that, given that it's not in the historic district, that's the only thing.
Yeah.
Does help.
Hmm.
Um, because, I mean, I, when I was writing in Redwood, I did see.
Yeah.
A couple houses. Most of them are more four feet tall.
The gate happens to actually, you're a little smaller than it is, but it doesn't change the factual.
I guess, um, we could.
Can I just look for one?
Eileen Rosenberg has her hand raised.
Oh, okay.
Oh, good. Cam, can I just look at that? Is there any way they can really lower it an inch or two to the?
I don't think so. The hardware or maybe like.
Dropping it?
Good, and I, I guess it has functionality issues.
Well, it's probably has to do with snow also.
It does.
Yeah, cuz it wouldn't open.
As we, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And different things of that nature, so.
I was just trying.
You have to change the driveway.
Yeah.
If you could put the hinges down. The hinges are on the, uh.
On the wall.
On the wall, on the side.
Eileen.
Hi. Um, this has nothing to do with this particular property, even though I happen to live around the corner from the property, but rather. The whole issue of, you know. You know, the board's responsibility to, uh, I guess follow the regulations. Um, so again, I have nothing against this property at all, but, um, I, I'm always conscious of the fact that. Enforcing the current code and being reasonable about variances is important, but how do you balance that? So, uh, for what it's worth, I, as I said, I happen to live in that neighborhood. Frankly, I think being on a corner is less vulnerable than being. You know, further in, but, uh, in terms of theft or anything like that. And I don't know if a two foot extra fence is gonna help with that. But again, I, I was just addressing the larger issue of, uh, enforcement of the current code. Which I think everyone always struggles with, and I appreciate the board struggling with it as well. So, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Liz, didn't we on some other case where this came up, something like this came up, ask the applicant to give us a monetary, um.
Yes, an estimate. You can ask, you can, yeah, the board is permitted to consider the impact, the economic impact.
Yeah, cuz that could be.
The cost of removal, absolutely.
What is gonna be the cost to make this right?
You can ask for an estimate.
And then that could be part of our decision because of its, it's, you know, if it's a very high cost.
You could also refer to the ARBs, get their input on it, you know, if you wanted to.
Are they doing discussion?
I believe they are, right? They're still doing discussion items, Carrie?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, why don't we do those two things?
Yeah.
If you struck the new gate, it would be close, uh, to above sixty thousand dollars if you need a monetary number, and that was from East.
We need it in writing. You need it in writing for the record.
But they wouldn't need, they could probably use the posts and the mechanism. All they're really talking about is the, is the, the movable gate itself.
Or whatever it is, it should be written, writing in the record, whatever the gate experts determine it is.
Right, so it would be from the gate company or if you're using.
From the gate people, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, the suggestion would be to go to the ARB to see if they're going to, cuz they could say no to, um. They may not like, although it's not in the historic district, who knows what they're gonna say about the design of it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So if you go to discussion item with them, this way, we can adjourn this until next month.
Yeah.
You can get both, um, the ARB's input. Uh, as well as the, um, financial burden that it would be and if you would. Put some shielding to post, you know, that's idea as well.
Yeah, and then what, yes, whatever you can think of as to sort of mitigate the impact.
Anything to have.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, just out curiosity, when you are, I mean, you're giving it, you put it into consideration, and I see how hard it is. About setting precedents and the deliberation there, we can see, see how we do that. How do you determine between one. Case and another? I mean, a- as far as if this was a, um, property coverage or if this was a side yard setback or this is a gate. Where do you decide or where do you draw the line? Because in all honesty, you're breaking, you're setting precedents each time you grant relief.
Actually, this is something that we don't normally grant relief for.
So it's not anything to be considered for?
I mean, we can't, we, obviously, we're a board that always could grant relief and will grant relief in certain cases. But quite honestly, with fences, it's very rare that we grant relief. I mean, we've had people who want to put nine foot fences up.
See, the, the consideration is, if in effect, we had been able to review it prior, would we have given you a variance then?
Right.
And, and we, and we did not get the opportunity. And that puts us in a very difficult position.
Right.
Because effectively, it was done prior, and now you're coming and asking us to give a variance when it's already been built. Would we have done it initially? That's the consideration.
Okay.
But it's not a.
I just want to remind in the right way.
I wanna condone.
But it's not a normal variance that we would, because pretty much we hold to the standard of the four foot fence in the gate, in the, in the front yard.
So what we're saying.
There are rare cases.
Have it cut down rather than keep following this path. I, I just like to do the best for everyone.
Right. Right.
Instead of continuing on.
I mean, it may be that because of, I don't know what if the cost number's gonna come back, but that would be taken into consideration. I mean, I can only think of a couple of cases where I know that we did where there was a property on the water. And the harbor committee had required them to put in certain amount of vegetation, but you can't have the deer fence in the front yard that's six feet high. So the deer kept eating the vegetation, they kept having to replant and replant. And so we allowed them to put in. But we gave them, it was only for three years or something to establish the planting. So, it's not a thing we do all the time.
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, so we can make, I'm gonna adjourn this until, uh, the April twelve meeting.
I second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We have another one. Absolutely, that's where it's gonna hit the fan.
Okay, so now, um, we could open the hearing for Seven Cornell Road.
I so move.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Okay, my name is, uh, I'm a fire. Um, the owner.
You're the owner, so we will meet, you're not, are you a lawyer?
No.
That's okay.
I'm a lawyer.
Alright, so we could, sorry, any please?
Okay, sounds great.
Do you sort of tell the whole truth? Cam. What am I saying?
The truth.
Do you have to tell the whole truth? The truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth, copy that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the existing, uh, it's a cottage that's at Seven Cornell.
Yeah.
It's built in some place in the sixties. I bought it in seventy-six.
At Centennial, you know?
Yes, so, um, for the, the person who actually built, just a, uh, two bedroom, one bathroom cottage. You know, with a small living room and an unconditioned porch. So it's actually, interestingly enough, supported a little bit of street. Uh, something that has been, uh, done for years. The house that was originally constructed, I believe, is parallel to the rear property line and both side property lines. Cornell Road in front, uh, takes a big swath.
A big curve there, right?
Front of, of the, uh. The property and it, um, and it makes it, obviously, it varies bigger. The houses on both sides of this property, Seven Cornell. Uh, have dimensions from the property line, uh, to the, of about ten feet. Whereas in Seven Cornell, we're about twenty, twenty feet, um, from the street. So it picks a, it picks a big chunk, uh, and actually on the house, uh, on the other side at one forty-one Rentwood Road as well. The house that, if the basic house, just eight Dartmouth Road. And, uh, their side, uh. Yard is actually fronting on Cornell Road. And so their house is actually fairly close to Cornell. Uh, we'd like to add a very modest addition to this house by extending the exterior lines, front, back, uh, front, back. To add a bath, a bedroom and a bathroom, uh, on one side. And that's where we'd like to have the, um, setback variance. On the opposite side, where there's the existing unconditioned porch, we'd like to turn it off and build a little living room. That doesn't require us a variance because as the curve goes around, where it's thirty-five feet, so we're fine.
Right.
So we're simply extending this little ranch style cottage. Uh, now that we've got a couple of grandkids, house is too small, so we'd like to make those, uh, small changes. We've gone through a, uh, we're gonna be adding a new civic system. We've had it designed. Uh, it contains the rear, uh, because all the piping goes out of the rear. Um, and so with the, uh, with the exception really of, um. The house across the street, which was recently constructed, one of, a mosque. Um, unfortunately, it's the only house that focuses, that fronts on Cornell Road. Between Dartmouth and Redwood Road. So it's a very small little stretch. The expansion, uh, between Seven Cornell and Eight Dartmouth, there's a huge, um. Line of, uh, Leland Cypress that I planted about fifteen years ago. It's a, it's, there's no one you can see in its size. But right on the other side of your fence. Uh, between these two properties is a garage on, uh, Eight Dartmouth. So, the only structure that this expansion would have an impact on is their garage. Which is actually elevated, uh, when the property was. So, uh, I don't believe that, uh, by expanding this house. About sixteen feet toward the property line at Eight Dartmouth would really have any impact on the neighborhood. Uh, and on the opposite end, it's, uh. Does give one thirty-five foot setback, and it actually is the most fine house.
Liz, can I ask? Oh, she just disappeared. It, it would seem to me that you need a, a setback from the front yard also for the proposed deck. Because that's not thirty-five feet.
Uh, correct, there is a deck, and while I have, um, that's all part of the plan, it's a line submitted to the building department. And, you know, but the, I guess that one corner, which is, but.
That's not from five feet.
Very much.
The, the back corner is.
The deck is considered the structure and requires, uh, a variance.
Because the other, the other thing is that the, the living room that you're proposing, the corner of it would seem to me to be less than thirty-five feet from the property line also. If you can, can you approach?
Yes.
Liz?
Go into that corner.
But I believe that the, um.
So that's, if you look at that, that's thirty-five from there. No, 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 I know, but this dimension is thirty-five. But if you go from that corner, thirty-five feet is out there.
Yes, I understand that.
No, no, but it's not, it's not noticed for a variance.
Uh, and I don't know, I simply said this is what I'd like.
Oh, maybe he's just noticing the minimum?
Yes, I don't know. I'm not sure how it was written.
Hey, let's just see here, this is twenty-five.
He just noticed the minimum.
Yeah, so the steps, yeah, this, the, so that's probably why. So the steps coming off the deck don't count?
No, cuz they're twenty-seven point six, right?
Well, no, that's the dimension to the previous, um, steps, the existing steps. So the black ones there are closer than the twenty-five point two. Would they? They would need to be noticed, wouldn't they?
They would, they would if they were closer.
This is twenty-five.
Right, so everything.
More like twenty-three.
Right.
Approximately.
Yeah, cuz it's, it's, that's.
For that corner. There's no dimensional regulation given for the stairs of the deck, right?
No.
No.
Okay.
So we need a dimension from that corner of the step.
On the survey, yeah.
Yeah. So from, we need this dimension here. Cuz that's the tiniest one.
Yeah, I have to ask the surveyor to give you the dimension.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the house corner and the post deck.
The other thing that I noticed that I, I think we should, um, ask is that this property line.
Village is muted. Thank you.
So.
Sorry.
This, I don't, I don't know where these are, you know, this is, this really is just.
Yeah, it keeps going downhill.
Right, so from this point, if you draw forty-five, this corner of the building may be out of a pyramid.
Ultimately, to be honest with you, we haven't designed that exactly. My goal here was to determine whether the front yard setback could be granted. And then we would consider going ahead with the rest of this design. If that became the case, we would make sure that we hit the pyramid.
So. That's a little unusual.
Yeah, we just need, we need to see the whole thing to understand before we begin.
Normally, what we would do is we require some spot elevations along this and a first floor elevation. So then you can do that in relationship to each other.
Right.
So I don't know, how do we proceed with this, Liz?
Well, I think it's up to the applicant, if he'd like to. We can definitely proceed with the deck, the proposed deck, but it sounds like there may be a pyramid issue with the proposed second floor of the addition. So you would want to, you probably want to get it all approved at once, I would think. So you'd want to go back and just make sure you're not seeking pyramid relief. And then we could renotice the deck relief and the pyramid relief at the same time. And you would need to update your survey for the, for the distance of the deck anyway. So maybe that'll give you an opportunity to decide what you want to do.
I mean, I personally don't have any problem with setback from the front, I don't know what other people say.
I, I don't either. I sympathize you with your one bathroom.
Well, and given the curve.
Right.
This, that's definitely a unique piece, it's just we need to have it properly noticed. And because, you know, given that you have this, and I know, you know, kind of the nice view of the water, but it's.
Right.
It cuts into your, it cuts into your front.
Well, and also it's a, you know, the house is where the house is.
Yeah, small and.
And so, wait, just can I ask a question, though, you're saying that the current porch is on tree trunks?
Yes, it is.
So are you gonna pull those tree trunks out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I was trying to figure out if you were leaving or not.
The porch is currently right here, and I'm gonna tear it off and build a new.
Right.
I know, there's no place to even eat in the house. Yeah, yeah. It's probably very first little tiny cottage is on record.
Okay, so we.
You're moving in the right direction.
So if we could make a motion to. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak about, make a comment on Seven Cornell? Nope, okay, thank you. So I think you understand what it is that we need to return it. And we look forward to hearing the changes and for you to update the proper variances on the survey. In that motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Right. And so the one thing I would just add, when you are, don't want to put where the septic will be. You know, so you'll have everything.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, oh, in the back.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't see it on the drawing.
Oh, I see, yes, in the back.
Oh, in that package. Yes, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now we are moving to three sixty-nine Madison. Are they here or not?
No, they, they did not send out the mailing in time, so they have to renotice, so.
You have a motion to table three sixty-nine Madison?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we will move on to fifty-six Redwood. Okay, great, so we can make a motion to open the public hearing for three sixty-nine Madison Street?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Mike Chiapi and.
Are you a lawyer?
Excuse me?
Are you a lawyer?
I am not a lawyer.
Just spell your last names for the record.
C I O F F I.
Mike, we could swear you in?
Excuse me?
We could swear you in, you'll, you'll tell the whole.
I'm sorry, excuse me, is this fifty-six Redwood?
Yes.
Thank you.
You promise to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Well, right ahead.
We're seeking a variance for two setbacks, we would like to build a front entryway. Where we need to set back for the actual entryway itself and the stairs.
This is the rear.
Right, you're, you're on the water, correct?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
I would confuse you with that too.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a rear yard.
So we don't, so we don't have an issue with the wetlands at all because you're not in your front.
Correct.
It's just the fact that you're in your rear, so it's close to the street.
Can I, Liz, can I ask a stupid question? Why is the, the setback twenty-seven feet? Required setback, is that right? That seems like a weird number to me.
I agree, I was gonna ask Chris about that, but I didn't have time.
There's no, there's no reduction in that, like the five, the four tenths rule, that's only for width, isn't it?
Yeah.
There's some American.
No, that's what I was wondering, because there's a four tenths rule, but that's only for width.
That's for the width.
I wonder if it's a typo.
It could have been a typo. I'll have to check with Chris and just double check.
It's an odd number.
It maybe, maybe. As a continuance situation, like if there was one there already.
Oh, maybe.
You know, yeah, it could be.
Oh, right, because there was a stoop there.
Yeah, so you're probably feeling like it's a continuance situation, where you get to continue that non-conformity.
Right.
And therefore, they only have to meet at two twenty-seven.
Seven, right.
Yeah.
That makes, that makes sense.
Okay. But we can confirm it with him, for sure.
I, I don't really have a problem with it, I mean, the, the, the proposed, yeah, and the, the house is where it is. And you don't want to move anything toward the water and you're still twenty-five feet back with the. Step, correct, is that correct?
Twenty-five, four.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's a back, yeah.
Yeah.
Or is it twenty feet? No, it's twenty.
Twenty feet is the step, the first step.
And twenty-five is.
Twenty-five point four is the actual.
Right, and in the historic district of principal is twenty, so.
And this is not even in the historic district.
No, so.
Yeah. Given how narrow and.
Yeah, I mean, there's no way to do anything on the sides.
No option.
Yeah.
I have no objections.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak about? Fifty-six Redwood? No? Okay, great. So we're gonna have a, a motion to. Ask Liz to read it from Google, of this variance.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Are we doing good?
So far.
Okay. Now we will move on to open the public hearing for one thirty-two Main Street.
I so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, it's recent, Katie Frank, two seventy-nine Main Street. Yeah, the applicant, uh, the architects of Zoom. And Bo is here, and the applicant. So I just want to talk about some of the legal issues, start under the code. And then obviously if you have specific questions about the proposal, you are free to answer those. So just want to acknowledge at the outset that we are asking for. To give a number of variances. Some of them vary substantially, and that's one of the factors to use. And see the answer then. The third factor. Under the code of state laws, whether undesirable change. Can be compared to the neighborhood or detriment. By variances we're seeking. And I would submit to you that the opposite is true here. And if you look at the code itself, its legislative findings, determinations. And its declaration of purpose, I would submit to you that this is exactly the sort of thing. That this board should be considering and encouraging. If this board and, and other zoning boards in this village spend a lot of time talking about. The beautiful old historic buildings that are here, as you should. But when it comes to Main Street, it is more than just the buildings themselves. But it's the businesses that inhabit them. It's the independent businesses that inhabit them. And this is a family run business, David and I have been running this business for twenty-seven years. Making Sag Harbor what it is. And the code talks about that specifically, the very start of the zoning code. In section three hundred dash one point two. It says, the board trustees finds that there are certain characteristics of the village of Sag Harbor which are significant. It goes on to talk about the economic base of the village. And says that every effort should be maintained, made, so this is for, for this vale benefit. Section three hundred dash one point two B three. Every effort should be made to maintain the year-round community, including its community facilities. Services and convenience shopping, service businesses and employment. Section four goes on to talk about careful conservation must be given to the practices and needs. Of established businesses and industries. It goes on to talk about the economic stability of the village. And it goes on to talk about the social and economic well-being of private property and the value of those buildings. And I would submit to you that, that this is what we're talking about here. And I think everyone in this room would be sad if we saw an independent business close. It's, it's hard enough in today's world for retail business to compete with Amazon and big box stores. And if we, we as a village are not doing everything we can to help these kind of independent businesses survive. They will be replaced with these, you know, fancy chain stores that are up and down East Hampton. That never, no one ever goes in or buys anything or, or even knows what they do or what they sell. And so I would submit to you that, again, we acknowledge they're substantial. But we are proposing to keep the historic facade of the building one hundred percent intact. The applicant has retained the services of very well-respected local architects to renovate. The interior of the building and to use the space in a way that would allow them to continue to thrive into the twenty-first century. And so I think with that in mind, the, the, the first factor is more than satisfied. Not only will it not create an undesirable change, but I, but this would be a great thing for the character of the neighborhood. Whether, the second factor is whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. And I'd submit to you, the answer is no, for those same reasons. Number three, whether the requested variance is substantial, yes it is, we concede that a hundred percent. And the, the last factor, whether it's gonna have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. In the neighborhood or district, again, for the same reasons I talked about in the first one. I would submit that this is the kind of thing that the village should be doing. So, you know, those are the, the. As we see it as the legal issues and the factors under the code, I'm happy to answer any questions directed at those. And, and Bo and Michael are both available to answer specific questions about what we're proposing to do. And I think, do you want to, you want to give them a presentation first, or do you want to? Okay. Okay, so if I could, unless you have a specific question for me, or something I just said, or I'd like to turn that over to, to Michael from Zoom.
Hey, Rick.
Good evening, members of the board, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, Michael Lamont from Stellamont, Rani Architects in Bridgehampton, New York. Apologies for not being able to be there this evening. I have Bo Durham is there, and Bo, if you'd like to come up and, and, and bring up the boards. Because I think that there might be some questions regarding the overall sort of strategy. And, you know, I know that this is the ZBA and not necessarily the Architect's Review Board. But we just wanted to bring a couple of points to your attention to, you know, what we sort of considered in, in designing this addition to this building. And I think that, you know, a couple of things was, you know, the initial concept was design a building that was, you know, respectful of, of the scale of all of the adjacent neighbors. Does, it's a very eclectic sort of group of buildings back there. And we thought it not necessarily appropriate to design something that was, you know, residential in nature. So we think that it's a, it's really a commercial district. You know, we like to think of that there's gonna be, you know, more interaction with, you know, with basically the buildings and. The back of Main Street, so that it becomes kind of a second Main Street. A lot of us that live there year-round, you know, we use the back parking lot to park, and we go into the stores from the backside, or we go through the alley. So the thought is, was to really design what could be a Main Street store, but put it on the back, so it becomes a second Main Street. So that's a, you know, we think that it's, it speaks to the nature of, you know, Main Street having a, you know, similar to the front of the in-home store. That's facing Main Street, it also has, you know, a bit of an industrial, commercial quality. We designed it so that we thought that it, it spoke to both the sort of scale of the adjacent buildings and the materiality of the adjacent buildings. Having this vertical wood panel and having a black, a curtain wall, you know, that was sort of like much, much more consistent with what we saw. You know, on buildings fronting the street. We including some decks and overhangs on the backside, which we think, you know, helped the scale. We actually have to, you know, the first floor is not, the, the ground floor is not. We actually have to, um, you know, the first floor is not, the, the ground floor is not FEMA compliant, so the FEMA compliant level is up higher. So we use these, uh, these ideas of these small overhangs for both sun shading and for some, you know, uh, secondary means of egress, and we thought it, it helped the actual overall scale of the building. Um, I think that when you see, I don't know if John is, is, if you can bring up, John, can you bring up on the screen? Can you bring up the A two hundred sheet that shows the sort of rendered view of the model, plus all of the adjacent buildings from the back of, uh, Main Street there?
Sure, I can. Carrie, can I share the screen here? Carrie?
Yes, you can.
Great, thank you. Okay, can you all, can you all see that okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
So, yeah, there's a, a few site plan issues that I think, you know, in terms of parking and some egress and, um, but I think in terms of, you know, just talking about big picture, John, can you go to A two hundred that shows that back elevation?
Yep.
Yeah, do you have the next one? There's a second A two hundred that went further out, that had, uh, more of the adjacent buildings? If not, and it, and it showed the model view.
Is this the one?
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's great, that's great. Um, so when you look at, look at the, you know, the scale, and like I said, and I understand this isn't the Architect's Review Board, but when you look at the scale of the, basically starting at Apple Bank, you know, going to the Douglas Elliman Building, what's a little misleading on this drawing, it's a perspective that actually our building is about the same height as the Douglas Ell- Elliman Building, it just comes out further, so that it appears, you know, slightly larger in scale. And then going, basically heading north on the back of Main Street, you see the back of Lulu's, which is a enclosed dining porch, and then it goes over to the five and ten, and then if we had a little bit more space, we'd go to the movie theater, which is, you know, a, a full other story and a half above, you know, what we're looking at there. So what we did was, we were looking to, like I said before, we were looking to incorporate, you know, features and aesthetic of Main Street, you know, being respectful of the scale, but really starting, starting to sort of show, which we think is, you know, I think that people that, like myself, that live there year-round, we, we use this parking lot, this is how we access a lot of the stores on Main Street. So I think having a second sort of Main Street, and not just having a back door with dumpsters and back doors and garbage boxes, you know, it just sort of sets a precedence that we think that, yes, is what I think that, that, um, you know, I think that downtown Main Street could use, which is, you know, better use of the backside of Main Street. And, um, so that's all I think I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions and, if anybody wants to add anything, Beau, if you have anything else you'd like to add there?
I have, um, when I look at the renderings and, um, one, I want to applaud you on all the photos and then the rendering of what it's going to look like, it's very helpful for us. But are these going to be apartments in the back, or is it still retail store? That's why it wasn't clear.
Yes, so the, so the ground floor, and actually it's labeled on the plans that we submitted, so the ground floor is really basement and storage and access.
Right.
So what we, we have, we have, we basically have a fire-rated stair enclosure that goes three stories. We included an elevator, because the building inspector asked us to make this, you know, accessible. Um, you know, whether it needs to be accessible, I think that it's, it's typically up to the jurisdiction. I'm, I'm not sure this building needs to be accessible, but we want to make it accessible if at all possible, which, which, you know, which, which changed the plan of, of the actual usable space, but we, you know, like the idea of making it accessible. So the main floor is, uh, an addition, so basically you have the, you come up, um, actually, if you go up to the, so the basement, you basically come in, yeah, the main floor, this is good. So you'll come up the existing stairs at the back of the store, you know, I would imagine most of the board members are familiar with the store. Uh, so you come up the main, to the landing, and then you'd enter the, the retail space, which will basically provide, um, you know, the owners with an additional retail space on basically the backside of what he has, um, without compromising, you know, the space that he already has. And then this would go all the way back, and then on the floor above, he's looking to have office space that he could lease out to other businesses, um, as part of just generating additional income, um, to be able to maintain his business. So, uh, second floor plan, so this shows, right, this shows the office space going up. Basically, there's, you know, a series of powder room on both floors, a WC, an elevator that makes it accessible, and then a fire-rated stair enclosure that goes up basically three floors.
Okay, and that's where I had seen it saying retail, but when I looked at the two decks and the people in the back, it looked residential to me. And I couldn't understand, if it is retail, why you're using a retail, uh, rooftop deck? That to me begged a question.
Okay, so, so we have a few decks here, we have, we have, if you go down to the first floor, we basically, we put a deck outside the retail space of the first floor. And that did, did a couple of things, when you look at the rendering, we think that that significantly helps the scale, because we inherently have three stories, which is within height limitations, but it is three stories, because the lowest floor is actually below floodplain. So, uh, we thought that the, 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 the deck outside the main floor at the retail level was a space that, you know, just basically extends the retail space. It provides some covering for the entrance below, it provides, uh, an extra if there's, you know, if there's a fire or something that somebody can get outside. Um, and also, we think that it helps the scale of the building. As you go up one more floor, I mean, it's definitely retail, it's not like we could change this to apartments, because we're just proposing a WC on both floors. So as you go up one more floor, um, it's an open office space, what we're proposed. And we, we do have the same deck, which basically provides a couple of things, it provides the same thing that one can get outside in case there's an emergency, it provides some sun shading from the back, because that's sort of facing south and west. And, uh, we think that it helps the scale of the overall architecture in terms of its overall design. Um, we have included, you know, to going up, we basically have a, a bulkhead. You know, the owner thought that a rooftop deck would, would increase, you know, because he's, he's going to have to, you know, to recoup his investment here, he's, he's going to have to provide amenities to, to, basically to have a tenant on the second floor, and then to have his, you know, basically his retail at the ground floor, so that the, the rooftop deck, we, how we achieve that was that we basically, we have the bulkhead of the roof sloping back. Um, and in a similar way, we actually, our office actually did the hardware store about twenty-five or more years ago. Um, and we basically had a similar rooftop access, where we, uh, stepped the rooftop stairs back uh, from the edge of the building to provide both rooftop access, and secondly, a deck as, and, and pushed back from the edge of the building. So John, can you go back to, let's see?
No, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one, one point on that. I know.
That's the elevation.
I just want to make one point on the deck, I know there's other boards at times have expressed concern about decks, but I would submit that that's in the context of a house, where you have a neighbor next door, and there's privacy issues. This is something that's, you know, it's looking out on the parking lot, so.
No, I, I completely agree, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a great view. Um, or, you know, maybe someone would like it.
We did have, uh, concerns about decks that are overlooking Main Street, because it's weird, we thought, as a concept, to see people walking around on top of buildings on Main Street, but this is in the rear, so it's, I don't really have a problem with the concept of it in the rear.
I, I would just be curious how, how, when you think you would be using it? I mean, it's a retail store, I, I mean, unless there's going to be, you're going to be selling umbrellas and outdoor furniture, I mean, I mean, I, I was trying to envision, I mean, I love your store, and I love everything in it, so I was just trying to understand.
Well, I think Michael spoke to the, you know, the architectural design features and how it blends in, breaks things up. I also think, you know, it, to the extent that this might be rented out as an office space, it's kind of a nice thing to have sometimes in an office, is, is a place where, you know, workers.
Be able to walk on a nice day.
Get some fresh air, so I think that might make it more attractive to potential tenants.
So the thirty-nine point two foot height is to the top of that staircase bulkhead? Above, not the, not the, not the main parapet?
No, it's to the top of the bulkhead.
So, most of the building is at what height then?
So it's, um, two foot nine above the, uh, you see here.
The thirty-five.
The, well, most of the building is at this height, which is at two foot nine above the existing parapet.
Right, and what is, what is that above?
That's at the thirty-eight and five, thirty-eight, five and a half elevation.
Do you have a photo of that height, the height though, would be what? I'm just trying to figure, it's not thirty-nine, it's?
It's, it's, it's within the thirty-five foot maximum height limit.
Yeah, so it's, we have top here at four eleven, max height's at forty-two eleven, that's at thirty-eight five, so.
Right, but you're saying it's, 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 it's less than thirty-five feet above grade.
Right. Aesthetically, do you have a photo, you're showing the backend, do you have a frontend? Where's the?
You wouldn't see, from the sec, from the section you can see, you wouldn't, the, the angle of the street's here, so the sidewalk would be here. So you wouldn't see anything from the street.
So you're? Yes.
We, we could study that.
So basically, you're not changing?
There's nothing happening until the existing back of store.
Okay.
That, and that's an important point, that the street view with what we're proposing would remain completely unchanged.
I mean, I think it, it is worth doing a, a drawing, showing the, the view angles from across the street.
I think it would be.
Okay.
Well, well, we, you know, we, we initially entertained the idea of putting a third story on Main Street, which in terms of property values probably increases the property values more, but we, we thought it was prudent to leave Main Street alone and have the store basically not touch the, you know, the hundred-plus-year-old building, and then put everything on the back, where we have, um, you know, we have a, kind of a hole between two other adjacent buildings.
It would be good if you could do that, though, because we did, we, we did ask the cinema people to do that for us to show how, you know, when you're stepping back, um, looking across at what you're going to see, I mean, it may be nothing. Yeah, because of the sight view.
The street, the only thing you can see is their vents. This would be further back.
Right.
So you wouldn't see it at all.
Yeah, but I, I would like to see.
ARB will probably ask you that as well.
Sure, I think that's a reasonable, I think that's a reasonable question. I, I think when you look at the building stack, so we're cutting it through the existing building, if you go back to the building section, I think that there's still another thirty-plus feet or so, right? That's, that, that's a good section to show, so if you can sort of scroll over.
Yeah, yeah, oh, sorry, yeah, let's see if I.
Right, yeah. So basically, there's, there's more than fifty percent of the building forward of the addition that, so there's no, there's really no visual impact, uh, on Main Street. So Main Street, looking at this drawing, you know, Main Street would be basically equal to the floor level um, of the main floor on the right.
Okay. Um, and so just, when we look at this drawing of the height, we're showing the max building height of forty-two eleven, and in the variance, we're seeing thirty-nine. Oh, that's what that is.
Yeah, you have to go, John, can you zoom in on the right side and show the actual building height versus the elevation above the main level?
There's the fifty-five.
Sure, on this drawing, Michael, on this drawing?
Yeah, just on the, just, basically, just.
So most of the building is?
Right, so there's just, right. So you'll see the, the thirty-five foot, which is the maximum building height, is the red line, so we're, we're below that substantially, but the bulkhead does go, and there, there, you know, there has been other bulkheads, roof access, and there used to be a section in the code, I'm not totally sure if it's still there, but there used to be an exception for rooftop access for a bulkhead nature. Uh, but we basically, you know, pulled the building down to be below the thirty-five feet, but we do have the bulkhead roof access above the thirty-five feet.
Okay.
I guess one other concern is just that it's like doubling the building. Um, have you studied trying to make it smaller? I mean, I know that at a certain point, it's not economical, because you need square footage, but is this, as, just in terms of footprint, I, I understand the vertical nature, and I think that the design looks very nice and all of that, the height stuff doesn't really seem to be a factor to me, but it's just a lot of footprint. I mean, it also reduces any um, parking availability.
It's really not different than what Scent did, or what the library did.
Right.
So it's very similar. Um, what struck me is on, is how much had to be in another circulation.
Right, yeah, there's, the staircase and elevator take up a lot of room, yes.
And also ADA compliance and bathrooms.
Right.
So that whole thing took up such a big chunk of the space, I'd rather give it to retail.
Right.
So that I could actually do more.
Right.
I can't do that.
So just in terms of, is a dimension on here, like from the, in your retail area, from like the, the, the back of the bathroom to the wall of the existing building, what sort of number is that? I mean, it's not all that big, right?
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine feet inch.
Yeah.
The whole addition is, I think, fifty-six feet long by nineteen wide.
But even this, the part that's adjacent to the staircase is not actually all that usable, because it's this very narrow, long thing. The other part, though, is basically, what are the dimensions of it, like?
So, you know, we're, we're thinking of that narrow.
Eighteen by twenty-nine or something is basically the floor of the?
And below the arrow space, we think our office is essentially.
Oh, right.
That's right.
Can someone go through the variances that you're requesting? No one's done that yet. You gave a great rationale, but nobody actually went through the variances that you're requesting, for the record, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for your, uh, so on the side yard, we're asking for a relief of five feet for each side yard setback, where a minimum of five feet is required, we're proposing zero. Uh, for the rear yard, relief of fifteen feet for the rear yard setback. Minimum forty is required, and we're proposing twenty-five. Building coverage, relief of eight point three percent, or a maximum of seventy percent is allowed, and we're proposing seventy-eight point three percent. Lot coverage, relief of thirteen point one percent for total coverage, where a maximum of seventy percent is allowed, and we're proposing eighty-three point one percent. For height, relief of four feet, two inches of building height, where a maximum of thirty-five feet is allowed, and we're proposing thirty-nine feet, two inches. Parking, relief of nine parking spots, where a minimum of eleven are required, we're proposing two. Landscaping, relief of twenty percent landscaping, where a minimum of twenty percent is required, we're proposing zero. And for the GFA, proposing to allow a pre-existing non-conforming structure to expand by ninety-four percent of the goal for areas.
Just for the parking, guys, we have to refer it to planning pursuant to that one section of the code. Uh, Carrie, we have to do a referral to planning, and they, it's this one section, I'll prepare the memo, but they can't act on this until we get the referral back from planning pursuant to this one section for any parking waiver that's required. I can look it up if you need me to.
So, is, I, uh, and just in terms of the parking, you do have a garage, right? Under the?
That would be for access to bring product.
But it's not going to, I mean, you can't, because of the park, I just, because it could be a parking place.
The ceiling's.
Too low.
It's, it's, it's tight, and again, it's below the F B.
Uh-huh.
So, it's, it's more just for access to bring product in and out of the store.
When my name Cooper does spin under the door, hey? I know, I'm not the way Chris would count that.
So, so you have the, uh, overhang, and you have the garage space, but now we understand how you're going to be using it. So when you say there's the two parking spaces, they're right be, beyond the underhang, the, and that's it, there're only two spots there. And do you, as the store, have any rights to the parking spaces in front, you know how they? Okay, so that's the planning board will have to. So that's the planning board will have to.
Could use this, the roof. Can you tell me exactly again, what's the function of the roof? In terms of its utilization?
Michael, you still with us?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to, um?
I'd like you to elaborate on the roof.
Sure. Sure. The, the rooftop deck, so we, we basically, you know, identified an area which is, which is above the addition. So it's, it's significantly past Main Street. So there's no, there's no impact on Main Streets or thirty plus feet from the Main Street. So the idea of the rooftop decks, we have this, this three-story stairs that we have, we have a fire rated stair we have anyway. And then, so what we wanted to do is we, we were looking to have, uh, an additional amenity, which we thought was important to, you know, the, the tenant of the, of the office. The owner requested this, plus that they, the retail, um, the retail side thought that this would be something that they could potentially use to, um, have some additional exterior space above. Um, and it is overlooking the back of the, of basically the parking lot area on the backside. But basically just having, having a, an ability to offer, uh, an amenity to both, you know, basically the three tenants, meaning the owner of the retail and the office people was the, and we thought that, you know, architecturally, a lot of times rooftop decks really are a hard thing to design for, that it just sort of detracts from our, you know, basically the overall architecture. And we thought in this situation, as we step back the bulkhead and we step back the handrail from the face of the building, we thought that it didn't have any impact on any, any, uh, of the sort of adjacent conditions or other, um, basically businesses on the back of Main Street.
But you use the term exterior to utilize, to utilize what? That's what you said.
Uh, it wouldn't be utilized for putting, yeah, to utilize to inhabit, to take staff members up there to, to have a place that you could sit down, um, and have a, you know, a meeting for the retail, to have a meeting for the office people, to have a, a place to sit for the owners. Uh, it's not intended to be a furniture showroom up there. It's not intended to have umbrellas or any, you know, large scale, you know, products. But the idea was that it was something that could be used by, like I said, both the owner, the office people and the retail component as a place that they could sit outside and potentially have, you know, meetings or, you know, small, you know, sort of in-house events.
Thank you.
So can I just ask one question? As I look at the second floor plan, so this is A one oh two. I, I know where the stairs are when you go up to the second floor currently. And, you know, so there you're saying those windows will be removed. And then you have this door here. But is the only way to get into, will you be able to go to the rear from the front? So the only way to get there is coming up this way. That's what I wasn't sure.
Yeah, not to the roof, but.
Yeah, so the second, the second floor is not connected. I, I don't know if I, if I'm understanding the question, but the second floor is not connected. It wasn't possible. The floor levels are too different. The first floor, you can go into the Main Street store, go up the stairs to the landing and proceed to the back of the retail space. So that would be, that's accessible. But in terms of the, the second floor office of the existing building and the second floor office is not connected. It does, it doesn't work in terms of floor levels.
Got it. So, yeah, let's see. Yeah, I see. I just wanted to verify because the way the drawing was.
Well, I commend you on twenty twenty-three that you have, uh, a, an elevator for disability and access.
Have you had any comments from the neighbors on either side of you?
A lot of them can't wait for lunch on the deck. But, um, everybody is all set. You're going to make the back look good. And that's mostly what we've been hearing.
We didn't get anything.
Nothing in the, no.
So with that, can we open it up? Is there anyone here from the public? To opine? And, and at this point, Apple Bank and Lulu's, no, hundred percent. And have you spoken to them?
Spoke to Lil.
Well, mostly when they did their build out. This is all built out.
Okay, so, I mean, it just, given the, you know, we, we know they have that back deck and that's where they're. Okay. So, um, as you started out, there are a lot of variants here. Um, and I think, um, it might be helpful just for the board, given me the depth and massive change, I do think it's very attractive. Um, I think we would agree with your first summary, but, um, it would be helpful for us. I know you highlighted Sen and certainly the cinema, um, and the library. If we could just, um, take some time to digest and to, uh, talk to Carrie about pulling, pulling up, um, some of the approvals that have been done in the past, just so we can take a little bit of time to do that. Um, and then.
We need to, we need to refer to planning as well for the referral for the parking.
Right. So while, while planning is doing that, we can be digesting, you know, looking at some of the others and just making sure we feel comfortable with it because it is, it's a big project. And there are big variances. And obviously, if you could shrink it, that would be great. We do understand the amount of, um, volume that you're losing to the elevator, which is something that is a positive and we appreciate that. Um, and, and certainly, uh, we want to keep you as a happy, independent business in the village. And I just wanted to be clear that you weren't putting an apartment there, even though apartments are something that we are looking for, it obviously has to be done correctly and, um, and all that. So, any other questions while we're going to be going through the process of trying to understand more? No. Um, so if, if we could, um, make a motion to adjourn while you go to the planning board to discuss the parking piece. Um, meanwhile, we will continue to do homework on our side.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
And so April twelfth, it's, and just to note, it's not a regular Tuesday calendar, it just changed a little bit. Yes, so.
Same time?
Um, because Liz is going to be away and Carrie's going to be away. Okay, so we just wanted to try to find something to keep it within the month, but just move it a tad. Okay, so I want to make sure.
Thank you. Thank you for the service.
Make sure the presentation. Okay, um, so we'll see. So if we could, uh, have a motion to adjourn immediately.
I second. Hi.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.